Good afternoon. At this time, I'd like to call our City Council work session to order. And our first item on the agenda is a broadband initiatives update. Mr. Manager?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. As you recall, we were going to bring periodically back to you an update where we are on the broadband initiatives, both within the city and also within the region. Tonight's going to be a two-part presentation. We were scheduled to have Mr. Eric Collins with Spectrum with us this evening. Unfortunately, he's had a family issue and could not make it this evening. But just as good, we have Randa Gatan, who's going to provide that presentation for us to give us an update what's going on within the city, both on the Ardorff and the Vatti initiatives. And then Randa will be followed by Interim Director of Information Technology Regina Chandler, who will provide you some updates on the regional ring project, which is done by the Southeast Network Authority. And with that, Randa?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, good afternoon. So, like the City Manager said, I'm obviously not Eric Collins. And Mr. Collins did have a family emergency and did ask me to express his sorrow for not being here this evening with you guys. At any rate, jumping into the first presentation is just an update on the Regional Vatti Grant and where we stand. So, as you guys recall, we were awarded from DHCD, the Regional Vatti Grant, and that is, again, with the City of Suffolk, Isle of Wight County, and Southampton County. And we received that notification on December 13th, 2021. Following the notification of that award, our steering team met for the first time on January 26th. What that date is, is the date that begins our 90-day enter into contract date. So, we will be entering into a contract with the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission, and our plan is to have that contract authorization for execution on your April 6th City Council meeting. So, you guys can expect that on the first meeting in April. Next is the Ardoff update, and that walkout phase is in its final phase. Upon the completion of that, the data will be submitted to the engineers and the designers will begin their work. Once that work is done, the team will know what types of permitting, what types of right-of-ways they need to obtain for both the Vatti project and the Ardoff project. And just a great thing for the City of Suffolk is that Vatti and Ardoff will be being built out together at the same time. So, we can look at completion sooner rather than later. And finally, is our CARES Act project. The CARES Act project has been complete, and Charter wanted to share the update on the project as a whole. The construction infrastructure is complete, and Charter's team is currently completing the punch list and doing restoration in areas that require it. Since they completed this project, 386 citizens were able to subscribe to Charter's variety of services. And finally, this map here is a map that you guys have seen several times. It's just serving as a reminder that the areas that you see shaded in green are the Ardoff-funded areas. The areas you see in pink are the Vatti-funded areas, and the red triangles that you see are areas that were funded through CARES Act funding.
Good afternoon, everyone. Wanted to give you a brief update on the Southside Network Authority. Just to bring everybody up to history, of course, the five Virginia cities of Chesapeake, Norfolk, Portsmouth, Suffolk, and Virginia Beach got together and adopted a Southside Network Broadband Authority through the Title 15.2 Code of Virginia, and the goal is to enable lower-cost, faster service, and enhance broadband coverage via our connectivity ring. Our vision for the Southside Network Authority is ultimately, this would be, of course, a fiber-optic network ring that will connect our 757 region. And looking at the ring for the Southside, as you see, how it touches Suffolk down on 58, going down 58, and all the way back up to North Suffolk to touch 664, this network ring will enable not to compete with internet service providers. It would also serve as a backbone of our 757 digital ecosystem. And if you look at it as a transcontinental map here, you see the fiber that's coming over from the different areas here, the digital port that's coming from Spain and from Cape Town in South Africa. So, as you see, it's landing there at Virginia Beach and coming in through Virginia Beach to the Southside. The Network Authority decided on a dual-path decision on our November 12th meeting. Two paths, Path One with the construction ring, the Authority decided to work with the cities, and we decided to finance and award the construction contract for the ring. The dual path two is the Authority decided to enter into the negotiations with the proposer regarding the operations and the maintenance and the commercialization of the ring once it's built. Actions taken, the next steps. As far as the construction path, of course, on our resolution on the 2021-02 adopted back in January, all cities, we voted to approve of the SNA cost sharing and the agreement and allocated funds for that project. The construction contract is currently in a negotiation with Danella Construction, with the finalization date slated for this month. They awarded Phase Two of the contract to CTC as far as the design to complete that, and that is with the oversight of the Network Authority's engineering partner. As far as the PPP, the Public-Privet Partnership, directs the Southside Network Authority Executive Director to enter negotiations with GTS regarding a public-private partnership to operate and market the SNL ring. And negotiations with the GTS begins also this month. As far as the Suffolk broadband websites, of course, there's additional information on all of this, on the affordability of the internet and the qualifying households, all of the programs that Spectrum offers as far as internet assist, and information on Suffolk and Charter-Spectrum Partner Initiatives, all of the maps, frequently asked questions, and also, please, citizens and partners can check often for initiative updates. This concludes the work session presentation. If anyone has questions?
Thank you very much, Council. Questions or comments? Everybody pretty quiet? I can't let you off at that late. And I'm sure this presentation, with you two being here instead of Eric being here, we're getting off to a good start, not that I have anything against Eric. Just a few questions. This has been a long time coming and a lot of effort over the years. I know Regina, Randa, you've been working diligently on it. Regina, pretty much from the inside, and Randa pounded on some people on the outside. And what we're seeing is a combination of local, state, regional, and federal efforts to put this together. So, we've got Ardoff, we've got Vatti, and so we've got grants, we've got state money, we've got CARES Act money, which is federal money, and then we have a regional plan with the broadband. So, we have all four entities coming together, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe if things pan out within 18 to 24 months, we will virtually have service to all our underserved and non-served citizens throughout the city. I did have one question in regards to the Southside Network Authority and the regional connectivity ring. Does the entire ring need to be completed before it can be utilized, or is it done in stages? And is each stage, at a particular stage, would you be able to use it, or does it require the completion of the whole ring?
Mayor, that's a very good question. And I think a lot of that's going to pan out as the negotiations with Danella continue on, who's a contractor, on how he proceeds with build-out. There is certain areas where the cities will connect to them to receive service, knowing if I'm correct, Regina? And I would expect that we would be able, as we go, as long as it continues from one of the power sources, we might be able to start in phases. But the goal is that to complete the ring as expeditiously as can be done. But I believe there will be service available in phases.
Okay. Thank you. That concludes my questions. Once again, thank you, everyone, for their efforts. I will ask Council one more time if you have any questions or comments for either Regina or Randa?
Mayor?
Councilman Goldberg?
The only thing I would say, I appreciate the effort and all the work that's been done to this. Originally, when it started, that connectivity was only going to be from Balboa, Spain, over this way. And if you looked on the map now, the connectivity is just tremendous, tremendous. And you've got other places that are going to probably connect more. So, it's a wonderful opportunity. It's good that we're doing it.
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate it. And our next item on the agenda is the Historic District Design Guidelines update. Mr. Manager?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, Kevin Hughes, Deputy City Manager, will provide the update on this topic.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, good afternoon. Before I jump into what I'd like to propose and provide a staff recommendation, as well as a brief update, since it's been a little while since we've talked about the historic guidelines, I wanted to provide you with a quick, brief update on some significant projects that we're working on in the downtown area, that, again, were all part of the downtown master plan or variations that have come off of it. And so, first, the festival event park and the library space here on West Washington Street. I believe we opened the bid submittals for demolition tomorrow or the next day. And so, we anticipate and are hopeful that we'll start demolition in March, or worst case, April. And then, both plans sets for those projects should be into the city for permit review, starting off sometimes later this spring around the April or May timeframe. So, we are underway on those two projects, which we're excited about. Phoenix Bank and the adjacent parcel on the opposite side of that block, we have posted an RFP for those opportunities. Per the, I'm sorry, RFI, per the RFI, we are hosting site tours on March 18th, and then we will have proposals due on April 5th. We've pushed out that opportunity to a number of folks that we've interacted with through a number of months to make them aware of that opportunity as well. But if you know of anyone interested, feel free to send them our way or let them know that it's on the bid board currently. The downtown drainage plan, we're right around the 50% mark, and we should be making the turn there on Jackson Street, coming off of Saratoga here shortly. So, we're making good progress there. And then, the gateway wayfinding design projects. And so, what we anticipate in about a month or two months' time, bringing to you a pretty comprehensive project presentation that'll lay out some design concepts for feedback, as well as locations on that project. And so, we're excited to see where these designs have gone. A lot of folks have put time and effort and eyes on to it, and we think we're almost ready for primetime to share those with you and get your feedback here in a couple of months. So, we anticipate that coming to you. On the private side, a couple of good, number of projects continuing to move forward. Peanut Crossing, they're currently underway on their second phase of design. The former Suffolk News Herald building, which is becoming a mixed-use building, that'll complete later this summer. And then, Center 800, down here at 800 West Washington Street, you have a resolution for your consideration for housing support for that project. So, that's under contract, and we're hopeful that it'll be more successful this time around. So, good things happen both on the public and the private sector side. So, wanted to bring the historic guidelines back to you in a little different context. Last time, you saw what was being proposed. It was a pretty large presentation, a lot of information that touched on not just the design guidelines, but the process and feedback during some of the interviews that took place. And that was almost maybe about a year and a half ago. So, it's been a little bit of time since we've had this discussion with you. So, what I wanted to do is not do such a deep dive this go-around. I've just got a handful of slides, but try to elicit some feedback or some direction as it relates to some larger themes, really, as it boils down to alternative materials and some proposals that we're talking about, handling some decisions that currently go to the HLC that we'd like to do at a staff level. And that's all in the context of the downtown master plan. And so, one of the things that you see there in quotations was undertake regulatory improvements. And it's a really strong statement, and it's very powerful, but it's really, unfortunately, it can be a little harder to do, especially in a location that I think we've all deemed downtown Suffolk to be a special place. It's different from other places in the city, not that those aren't special, but we've put time, effort, money into studying downtown Suffolk and wanting to see it turn a corner or take another step as it relates to its ongoing renaissance. And so, with that being said, we've been able to do some low-hanging fruit, some of them based upon the pandemic, and some just good things that needed to happen. So, we've been able to successfully work on encroachment permits, to push outdoor dining out. We've worked with CARES funding to make those safer in some of our right-of-way locations. We've done that, too, by taking up parking, which we'd probably get something thrown at us about three years ago if we tried to take away parking on Main Street. So, we took advantage of a scenario where a lot of parking wasn't being used, and so far, so good. We don't get a lot of complaints about it. So, I think that was a positive step about going into the right-of-way and reclaiming it for our customers and our pedestrians versus vehicle traffic. And so, it's more than just eating outside, it's changing the mindset of downtown Suffolk. Does it have to be a parking space, or can people enjoy that as well? We've done some signage regulation. When Council took action and voted on the modifications to signage, there were some slight improvements to the downtown area. Once we put the regulations in place, that'll allow for larger signage in the historic area for your signage through the windows. You might not recognize that was in there, but there were some purposeful improvements to the regulatory situation for signage in the historic area when you took that action. And then, finally, the big one in front of us is updating the historical district guidelines. And I'm going to, again, keep it kind of high-level and really boil it down to two things. One being the opportunity to educate and inform property owners, investors about the district and its process. And so, currently, if you go online and you want to find out more, you find this book. This is the one that we last updated in '09. And we found out through this process that it really needed an update, not just necessarily from the guidelines, but a user-friendliness. It's not a lot of visuals, it's black and white, it doesn't scream, "Hey, come invest in this location." And so, you got a preview of what Commonwealth Preservation put together, and we're still working on this, but it's much more modern, much more user-friendly. But we see this not so much as the guidelines or the how-to-do, but we want to kind of segment it out to say, this can be education. Why is downtown Suffolk important? What are certain type of housing, and what would be potential recommendations or designs thereof to improve a property or to introduce? And so, essentially, we want to sell it better, and this is much more user-friendly, especially when you think about someone who maybe just bought a home and is not knowing what they're dealing with, and they're learning information piecemeal from staff as they show up to City Hall. This does a really great job of explaining the process if you want to put time into understanding the process. And so, it's not done. You've seen a preview of it, and we're going back and forth to make this a better educational tool. So, I'll kind of put that off to the side a little bit. Secondarily, we do want to take time and look at the historic guidelines and make it an opportunity to improve the process. So, when someone makes application, as well as make some of those, shift some of those decision-making opportunities from HLC to staff, the ones that we deem appropriate. And then, the big one for discussion is the alternative materials. And so, one of the things that we think about is, you know, you've seen some recent actions that have come your way for appeals, and some will probably need to come to you. The Cultural Arts Center is one that needs to come to this body. It's a landmark facility that needs a lot of discussion and thought. The one, for example, a block or so off here on West Washington Street, we think we can deal with that at HLC and give them more power to make a decision versus having to appeal that process. And so, that's what we spent time on to see if we can improve. The last time we had this discussion, to give you more information and empower staff as well as the HLC in a different way than what we do today. And so, first and foremost, I kind of beat this one up a little bit. So, we're going from the, we want to go from the '09 to the new guidelines. When you receive this, and the one that I have and what you see in your photo here with the older photo, and if it's my choice, we're not going to use this photo. We're going to have a better photo. I'm not sure it does us justice here. But you can see there, it has the word "standards" on it. When we're done with this, it's not going to say the word "standards." We're going to use the word "guidelines" to create more flexibility, because what we're going to talk about is making decisions that are, can be difficult because the architecture in downtown Suffolk varies so much. If it was all just a simple palette of historical buildings that matched on error, it may be easier. But they don't. And so, but we want to empower people based upon the downtown master plan, as well as some guidance in these documents moving forward, and I'll spend a little bit of time on that. So, again, digging into the modifications. And so, some of the easy shifts that we're recommending is on non-contributing structures. So, think of the Bank of America Building on Washington Street here. So, what staff will be able to work with the applicant on versus going to HLC today, they'll be able to handle what we're recommending at the staff level. So, versus a 45-day period and a public hearing and everything that goes into that, we want an interaction with staff to turn that around in a week or two or so. And so, that would be a non-contributing structure. That would include demolition, it would include additions, and it includes alterations, again, on the non-contributing structures. That's a recommendation we like to make. And then, we want to spend some time on the one that's a little bit harder, and that's the contributing structures. So, we still want to make some of those shifts. So, today, on those yellow bullets, those are happening and coming to HLC on all of those changes. And the reality is, a lot of these things are fairly small in scale. And so, what we want to shift is, instead of going to HLC and doing a public hearing on these items, we want staff to have the power to make these decisions and work with folks on these improvements. And so, on contributing structures, so these are more of your historical, your buildings, signage, parking lots, driveways, fencing, accessory structures, sidewalks, lightings, and fixtures. So, that's a process improvement we want to make, that we think we can handle at administrative level versus going through the HLC. And then, the fun one is the alternative structures. So, what we're proposing is a case-by-case basis. And again, because the architecture varies through different time periods and different styles, it's really difficult to do a one-size-fit-all on all the structures in the downtown area or the historical area. And so, we want to boil it down to, if you'd like to use alternative materials, we want to ask you a couple of questions to make sure we understand what the request is. And one is, can it be repaired or replaced, and why or why not? And we do think it's important to ask questions about, can the product, can you find it? Have you put time in to find out if you can supply it? We do think cost is something that needs to be discussed and at least have an interaction on. And then, we want to talk about, if you are to use an alternative material, can you keep the same appearance, style, and pattern? And then, of course, can the building maintain its character and defining features? And so, those are the questions that we want to interact with the applicant on and get a good feel and a good understanding as it relates to alternative materials. We're still not recommending calling out specific alternative materials. And I would feel very strongly with the same answer that Paige Pollard provided last time. It's extremely challenging to nail and say, "These are good," not knowing what's all out there or what's coming. And if we have to continue this laundry list of uses, on that case-by-case basis, it becomes even more challenging just to have a misstep. We're not building experts, and we want to make sure that we respect that process, but we can educate ourselves as they're proposed to us, as well as working with the HLC to get there. One of the things, and why we're recommending this, and this came up last time, versus kind of laying out specific uses, is we think it's important as a local government to be a certified local government. If we are to call out certain uses in here, say vinyl windows or things of that nature, we will probably jeopardize our certified local government status. We think that we can work with applicants, make good decisions based upon alternative materials, and also maintain our CLG status. And some of that is a little bit of gamesmanship, but working with the Department of the Interior and the State of Virginia. and the, and the state of Virginia to maintain that CLG status does have a benefit. And the reason I think there's a benefit is a couple of things. The, the city is, is obvious, as you're aware, is very large. We don't have the ability to have a staff member be a historical-esque expert because in, in reality, the historic district is rather small. And so having one person be this expert on everything that happens there is challenging. Staff come, staff go, we have to put those people to work doing multiple things. Having the opportunity to draw back and pull into the resources of the CLG or provide some guidance as you were with new staff members or other folks looking at different cases is a benefit for the staff. I would characterize it similar to where when we design roads, we're telling you to design it at VDOT standards. VDOT has put time, effort into it, they've drawn upon the federal highway, and so that resource that we're drawing upon has drawn upon other resources. Similarly, we would look at CLG to have a similar resource to us to provide us guidance when we make decisions. But we're doing it under the, the ability or the direction to let people invest in their homes, but also have that critical balance of having a historical community and at least the appearance thereof and saying that there's importance to that as well. So what we're planning and still working on would, would be the, the next steps that we have in front of you. And I, I know I'm not giving you a ton of detail, but I wanted to kind of take your temperature a little bit and make sure that we're heading in the right direction because what we'd like to do is based upon where the comments we may hear or questions we may need to get back to you is continue to finalize our, our, our draft guidelines with our consultant and the Virginia Department of the Historic Resources to attempt to maintain our CLG status at the same time. We would like to interact a little more formally with, with the public and get that, that, that view and that thought. We want to have a little more interaction with HLC to see if they would be open to working with staff to have a little more leeway and flexibility to make some decisions at their level, a level. We think, we think they'll be open to that. And then obviously we would start the public hearing process, which would include Planning Commission and then back to this body for adoption. And with that, I can answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. Council, questions or comments? Councilman Goldberg?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Mr. Hughes, I, I think we're, we're on the right move, steps here. I appreciate that effort. I, I think that we're, we're moving forward in a, in a good manner and I would support moving ahead this way and keep it going and see where we, where we go with it. But I think having some flexibility in there and also keeping, trying to keep what standards we can, I think it works and I think the direction that you're headed is a proper one. So I, I'm in great support of it, Mayor.
Councilman Fossett.
Just a couple of questions, Kevin. Great presentation and I think I'll get on the back of Mr. Goldberg on that, that I think it's in the right direction to figuring out some of these issues that certainly might be able to be handled at a staff level. Being that you're talking about staff level, what do you think, is this going to bog down the process for the applicant to extend the time for them to get up or down on this? Or what kind of hoops is, I mean, are they going to go staffing and then end up at HLC? Or are we going to go back and forth with that? And, and the timeline is, is, you know, I'm concerned a little bit about timeline because we have enough problems with timelines in different departments as it is today, getting simple things done such as in our planning department. So I don't want to put another level of staff on something that is going to also bog down the process even more. And ultimately, I hope that you take into consideration that the applicant should have an appeal process where they can go. And the appeal process is the final process is right here. So if it gets sticky, we need to have that where it comes in this body and we make the ultimate decision to help the applicant if they're totally in a disagreement with what staff is bringing up or what the HLC is doing. It might lessen the amount of times we have to look at something because you, you may be able to fix a lot of those issues with the product line that's out there today to help some of these residents that are in the HLC district here to, to get where they want to go. So I just want to make that comment, I'm, I'm going to be looking for that kind of thing as well.
Sure.
But I think there's a lot of good points here. You certainly, I got something you drive in the right direction, just we, we need to hone it down and see where it goes, in my opinion.
So a, a little bit of feedback and the thought behind it is so with, with the document to, to better educate and better arm the applicant, we think we can, if they spend the time researching, and of course, we're always here to, to assist people, but this will give them a better starting point to make a better application than what we currently have in place. It really starts with that. And then the goal really is not to, and we don't see it as in any, in, in any way that it would extend the process longer than what it is today. So anyone who's making application is interacting with staff and then they're taking in, in a lot of cases, not all, because staff is, has, has the opportunity to, to, to work and approve things, but adding a little bit more to that, but even if they're not, they're going to HLC. And so we would trim as many of those down working with staff, but I understand your point, we want to arm the applicant. A lot of what we see or spend a lot of time on is a homeowner coming in. And a homeowner and a developer are two very different things. And so a developer who has experience in the process and what is a detailed process and a homeowner who doesn't. And so the more information and better information we can provide to them at the beginning, we think will, will make everybody's life a little easier. But I understand what you're, what you're coming from.
Okay, I just appreciate it, thank you.
Councilman Ward.
Yes, I agree with a couple of councilmen's. I've been waiting to find out some meaning of, of this historic district, but I might look at it in a little different way and, and I understand people, well, you didn't say we don't have a lot of it, but when they invest in a house or somewhat, our concern should be the house. I mean, God bless your family, but the house is important. And when you got one house on the block, you know, I like to know, what are we trying to make that block look like? Because some of them houses besides the historic house i- is not competing for a historic district. It don't look like a historic community. And the reason why I said it, in my travel, I think I, in, in Carolina, I seen, I think with Wilmington, and they had a historic district and you can look at the work that has been done in the, in, in, in them, in them community. So I don't know how far we're going to try to make sure it ain't be one that, only that house look like historic, that's fine, but how about the rest of the community? You know, what, what are we trying to represent? You know, one house, that's the historic community or, you know, I, I might be going somewhere else different, but can you help me out? What's with that?
So I'll do my best and try to keep on track if I get there. So, you know, right now, we're not proposing, so the, the historic district itself kind of ebbs and flows and almost looks like a jigsaw puzzle. There are some sections that it is an entire block and there's some sections across the street that it's not. And so you can see in a lot of instances, just by the housing type, where the line is and where it's not. And it can be confusing, am I in a historic district or am I not in a historic district? And that's one of the things that this guideline is, is trying to help address, at least folks know that they're in there. I don't know if I'm, I'm, I'm helping you out on, or if I'm connecting.
No, you helped me out completely, but that's what I'm saying, it's so confusing to me and confusing, what I'm saying to you, if we want to do something like that, it's like a team effort because we can't have this person investing all this money in this one particular house and the rest of them buildings look like, hmm, I mean, I, I mean, how can you call it historic? Do you understand what I mean?
I think so.
Okay, what I'm saying, okay, just like fences, we, we trying to put together something downtown. It gonna be a whole different outlook of what it used to look, okay? Now, now we calling the downtown project. Okay, it's not the same. Some building's got to be torn down, it'll be different, it'll be having a different atmosphere. Now you go into the historic building, you're not going to a historic section, you go into one building. And the rest of these buildings don't look like, hmm, that's people homeless, I ain't gonna say nothing. Do you understand what I'm saying?
I think so.
You gotta be, you gotta talk something to the, not only the developers, but the landlords and everybody, this what we want to try to do. That's what I'm trying to get at because I understand when the people come here, and I'm glad y'all did this, because when people come here, we almost take it as a personal thing, but you have your money to invest, you already knew what the, the community looked like, you already knew it ain't gonna cost you more money, the parts might can't, can't get, so it's not our responsibilities. If we want to call it that, that's what it is. I mean, I'm just saying, if you invest all that money, maybe it's, you should do the investment, use research it. For y'all to come to us, we don't want nobody to invest no money and, and not be able to do what's on their mind, I understand that. But if you said one building, I, you arrive, I see one building look historic and five or six other buildings don't look historic. So what are we calling historic district? You call, I, I mean, you know what I'm trying to say? That's what I'm trying to say, I mean, I might not say it in a proper way, but you know, if we want to do this project or we want to claim it or name it, do we get involved? Do the landlords get involved and somebody else get involved? It's just like one house. I just don't see it like that.
I think, so the, the downtown plan hit on a, a lot of different components. This is one component of many. I'd also, to be frank, I think there's a lot of folks that are on board and, and want to see a lot of positive things happen down here. And there's some property, property owners who don't. And so they'll come along when they come along or when the economy comes along or we put enough time and effort as well as our private investor partners where folks realize that this is a place where I need to invest, not uninvest. And so we're at a, a crossroads with a lot of transitional areas and some of that stuff will just unfortunately play out over time with different projects.
Thank you, I mean, you understand what I'm trying to, I might just, but yeah, you hit, you're closer than what I was looking at for, thank you.
Vice Mayor Bennett.
Hey, Kevin, just a couple of comments and questions. On the historic landmark boundaries, that might be a little bit confusing, have some confusion with people knowing the boundaries where the lines are actually are. Cause I really don't know, tell you personally myself, I don't know all of them because I know like a few years back, Hall Place was a big thing about Hall Place and what was going on in Hall Place. I don't know what results ever came of, of that. So I'm just wondering how, how many miles or how many blocks or how is that designed so people will know that they are dealing in the historic district?
Yeah, and so again, we want to ensure that we've got a good documentation that folks can draw upon as a resource to say whether they're in or not. We can probably step up our game as, as what those resources are. We've had some creative suggestions along the way about some identifiers potentially, could be kind of a large scale project, but I don't have a really good answer for you quite yet, but we know that there's an opportunity to educate people about whether they're in or whether they're out. We're not proposing any changes or wouldn't recommend any changes to the, the boundary itself, but educating people and doing a better job of, of telling who's in and who's not is probably an opportunity for us.
And I think that's a great tool to do that and people will know exactly what they're investing in or where they live, what they have to do to maintain the historic house or whatever they're in that district. So I think it's a good tool that they will have to know exactly what is expected in that area. Also that the citizens were involved with the consultant when it came up with this plan. Citizens will be back involved with making the changes where, and you will have some surrets like you did before to get the public involved so to make sure they're following the guidelines and know exactly
Yeah.
what we are changing or what proposed changes are being recommended.
Yes, sir. We, we, we want to ensure that the public, so when, when the public was involved, there was opportunities for focus groups and feedback, maybe even some surveys if I, if I call correctly. Once we put this into place and they've got something to look and react to, we definitely want the, the public to provide us with some, some insight and guidance thereof. Yes, sir.
And I think those couple of comments, like the questions I asked there
Okay.
mean a lot, I think, to the public.
Okay.
Knowing exactly what is taking place, what to expect.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Johnson.
Kevin, I know you're trying to pacify a lot of different entities here, I mean, the state, the city, all of these people that are so pro. I just, and I think what you've, the way you started is perfect, this is what we're looking for and this is where we need to head with this thing. But I just hope that when the plan comes back, it's not the same plan we had before because we've got to be able to allow people to make these improvements in a cost effective way that will look like historical, but not necessarily be historical materials, of course. And that's one of the big things in the plans from what I can see, right? I mean, we, we've got to make this economical for people. We've got to give, we've got to make the individual as much, much a part of this as the HLC and the city. I mean, they've got, and they're going to be the ones that drive it and you know that. I mean, they're the one, they want one, nice homes and they want their property to be valuable and they want, and then the neighbors will see it and they will move in that direction. But I don't think we can tie people down as much as we have in the past. I'm hoping we're going to be able to open it up a little bit. And the his, truly historical part of our city needs to be preserved and maintained and move forward. And I hope there'll be areas that we can step in and say, okay, this is historical, it's been here a hundred years, but these places have not been maintained to the point that it can even be revived. So there has to be a plan in place to change all of that as well. I, what you've said is, is what I wanted to hear and I'm hoping that's, we're going to move in a real positive direction. But personally, I just want to make sure that when we come out with this thing, we have a much more lenient, open process so that we can give our HLC the ability to make a difference and, and make the people that are buying these properties as much part of it as we are because they're going to want to make improvements. So I, I just, hopefully we're heading a different angle. The other thing I just wanted to throw into that, we're a big city and there's historical influence all over the city. So we need to make sure we recognize that all these small churches, out in my borough, we've got Summerton Friends, we've got all these churches and things that have been there forever that could be a big part of this as well, but we want to give them the ability to move forward too in a positive way. So I'm hoping this will, we will be able to appease our state standing and we will also be able to appease the people that are moving here and give them a little bit of flexibility and guidance. But I'm, I'm on board, I think it, we're heading in the right direction, but just, I just don't want to see a really put together thing that we can't have change. And I'm kind of like Mr. Fossett, I think we need to have the final say when we need to have the final say because that's where we're, we're heading in the right direction. But thank you, I appreciate what you've done.
Councilman Williams.
Yes, Kevin. I'd like to say I'm in agreement with, with what you guys are doing. Actually, I have a two-part question here. How are the historic lines drawn and what makes an historic district?
So, and I failed to, to mention, I've got some, some folks here as well. So you know, you know Dina, who's helping with the, the downtown initiatives and Alexis Baker, who does all the, the staff work with HLC and then Kevin Wine as well. And so I'm going to attempt to answer that and I want to make sure I got this right. But through the years, council has taken action, there, there's a couple of different boundaries, but the one that we're talking about today is one that the city of Suffolk has designated. And there have been a number of changes, mainly expansions through the years of that historic district. And so it's been brought upon by council action through the years. Okay, all right. When was the, do you know the last time we made an expansion? It's been like 15 plus year.
Yeah.
What's that?
It's not.
Yeah, it's, it's been a while since we've expanded the boundaries. And what I'll do is we'll send you a, a map of the current boundaries following the meeting.
So as it relates to South Main Street, just use that for an example, South Main. I used to live on South Main, so and, and going back to what Vice Mayor was saying, Hall Place used to be at one point a his, part of a historical district, I believe, years ago. One side of the street was in the historical district and then there were some areas that weren't right across the street and you just said sometimes it's kind of carved out and how do y'all come up with that?
I would, I would ask the council that question. They, they essentially made those calls. So today, the historic district, when I look at the boundary stops at the railroad tracks. Our city of Suffolk Our City of Suffolk historic district. And so it, these are decisions that this body, or previous city council bodies, have made to expand the district or not to expand the district. My understanding that Hall Avenue took on a little bit of a life when it was under debate about expanding into there. Those are just some stories that I recall or if I've read. But today, it does not go into Hall Place.
Thank you. Councilperson Butler Barlow, get you in there.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Mayor. I agree with what everyone else has said. I just wanted to add in, I think as part of the process, I think it's really important that we're trying to encourage people to purchase older buildings and do restorations, and that we can do everything that we can, that we're partnering with them to do improvements and to make these buildings into what their potential is, rather than throwing up a whole lot of roadblocks for them to do that. And it sounds to me like that's exactly what you're trying to do, to streamline the process and make it an appealing thing, rather than a, you know, where it's a constant battle with what we want and what you don't want, and, you know, too much regulation and too much red tape to get through to get the projects done. So I'm hoping that this project, this whole process will create a good partnership with the property owners and the city, trying to get to the outcome that we all want. So just wanted to add that in.
Thank you. I believe that putting these changes in place will improve what we have today. Will it make everybody happy, or will we all agree what historic is? Probably not. But I will tell you, with these in place, life will be better, regulation will be better, and I think the historic district will be better.
Okay, I'll just wrap it up with a few comments. First of all, I want to thank the manager and staff for working on this. It's been still a long time coming, I mean, a long time coming. I think we're going back three or four years where we first started talking about amending some of the issues to make it a little easier for people to invest in downtown, to improve the process. I appreciate you mentioning, before we actually went into the HLC overlay district itself, pointing out how many initiatives we have going on downtown. I told somebody the other day, close your eyes, and three years from now, I don't think you're going to recognize downtown. By the time, you know, we do the green space and do the library and all those buildings are down, I think we're going to see some significant growth. That is going to attract a considerable amount of private investment. In regards to moving the lines, my memory's not that good, but I think the last time, I think since I've been on council, we've addressed it one time, and it was seven or eight years ago, when we actually compressed the HLC. It wasn't expanded, it was compressed. Because we tried to remove, one of the outskirts, I remember coming up Pinner Street, I think it went further down, and maybe it starts at the bridge now. So we tried to, we actually removed some of those areas that didn't really appear to have the historical significance that would warrant them being in the HLC. And I'm pretty sure that was seven or eight years ago, and it may be something that we need to revisit. But when it is revisited, there's two things that we need, that need to be top of mind. Number one, we want to protect the unique character and the historic look of particular areas, and we also want to be well aware of those that have invested prior to this, and ensure that we're protecting their investment also. So I wouldn't want to go into a neighborhood where there has been some investment and say, okay, we're going to take it out of the HLC. And these folks have invested significant money in those properties expecting like properties next to them, so we need to be aware of that also. I'm very pleased with what you have there in regards to what we've asked for, which is basically the education process. In this education process, there needs to be plenty of information out there so individuals understand that the property that they are considering buying is in this district and will be subject to more restrictions than outside the district. Now, how are we going to do that? I think some of it should probably fall maybe on the real estate agents in regards to our assessments. I know at one time, normally, I know if I'm looking at a piece of property, I think people do the same thing. Before, when they start talking money, first thing you go is, you go to the city site and say, let me see what it's assessed for. That's not an appraisal, but it normally puts you in the zip code. And when you go in to look at that appraisal, I think two bits of information should be in there. Number one, what the zoning is, which it used to be a while back, and it's not there now. So now you get to kind of hunt to see how that particular piece of property is zoned. And the second thing should be a designation that says historic overlay or historic district, and maybe has an asterisk on it and refers to something else. So those individuals become more informed. We haven't had one lately, but a lot of the issues that we've had to address have been after the fact, where people have gone in and really didn't know where they were, and they've replaced shingles, or they replaced siding, or they've replaced windows and say, oh, I didn't know there was any problem with it. So this is very important. The process improvement is significant, and by process improvement, I think you've addressed both those areas. That's process as far as staff is concerned, and process as far as HLC is concerned. And in both cases, providing for more latitude, so it does streamline the process. So while it may be a little bit more cumbersome on staff, for the citizen, it should be considerably easier. Because if we're going to attract people to invest their money downtown, we need to make it, you know, financially possible and the process be a little easier. So I like that, alternative materials. And no question that alternative materials has also been an issue, and I like the idea of not using specific brands or types, you know, we can leave that up to the HLC. And the importance is that it appears it doesn't affect the appearance of that structure. And they talked about appearance, style, and pattern, but I think along with those considerations, you know, should also be the maintenance concerns and also the energy efficiency. You know, when you're looking at the total consideration as to whether we're going to allow something. Because I think those are significant also. Sometimes, yeah, you can replace that with wood, and you got to paint it, but we just went through this with the culture center, but three or four years from now, you're going to be scraping and chipping and painting again, and do we want to insist that we use the same type of material? Not material, do we want to refurbish what's there at the expense of considerable loss of energy efficiency? So that would be another thing. Another thing I'd like to see, we talked about education, we talked about signage. In my opinion, we should have signs that say, entering historic district. And that could be going, most neighborhoods only have a couple of ways in and out. Every one of those neighborhoods should have a sign, entering historic district, kind of like entering golf cart community. We see if you have golf carts, there's a little golf cart sign there. So why don't we do that? You come across the railroad tracks, yeah, you're entering historic downtown, historic overlay. So that sort of thing would also make individuals much more cognizant of what they have to deal with. The public comment period, loom to what the vice mayor said, that's absolutely imperative that we do that and get that out, as we do with most issues. We seek to get citizen input, both from the commercial side and also the individual side. So with all that, with all that being said, sounds good to me, let's make it happen. Okay, I'm sorry, Councilman Fossett, one more comment.
I just want to have a comment on what you just said. It makes sense, is, you know, some of these people go in and they buy this house before they know anything. And they don't get told, and you're right, and some of it could be on a Realtor, but some of it could be person-to-person purchase too, they didn't go through a Realtor. I'd like the idea that if we could put something on the assessment document that says that, if there's a way to put it in there, historical district, something that maybe Billy could work on to see if we could do it, and that would, that would set the light off right there, and maybe the buyer will look at it. So I think that comment you made is a good idea. I just wish we could get to it and put it in there, and I don't know what it takes to do that, but we can certainly ask Billy Budd about it and see what he says.
He's working on it already, I'll see him shake his head.
Yeah, so that would really help out a lot. With everything else, it should be a home run that people get the education they need to do it. But anyway, thanks, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much, Kevin. All right, that concludes the open part of our work session. I do understand we have a motion for a closed meeting. Madam Clerk, will you please read the motion for consideration?
Pursuant to Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711A8 and A1, consultation with legal counsel employed by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the legal advice of such counsel, and the discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for appointment, and the assignment, appointment, and performance of specific public officers or appointees of the city. Specifically, the appointments are shown on the attached list for vacancies or term expirations for the Clean Community Commission, the Early Childhood Development Commission, the Economic Development Authority of the City of Suffolk, the Fine Arts Commission, the Human Services Advisory Board, the Local Board of Building Code Appeals, and the Sister Cities Commission.
Counsel, a motion to be in order. Councilman Fossett.
Move to approve.
Councilman Goldberg.
Yes.
We have a motion for approval and a second. Any discussion of the motion? Here in none. Madam Clerk, please follow the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow. Councilmember Fossett.
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Ward.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett.
Yes.
Mayor Dooman.
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
That concludes our work session, and we will reconvene at 6:00 PM.